I will call the public hearing of the Rules Committee to order and want to take the role to ensure we know who's in the team. Some judges here, at least one of the teams.
This is your honor, Justice McDonald.
Here.
Judge Farley.
Here.
Judge Stewart.
Here.
Judge Pearson.
Here.
Judge Wendell Dahl.
Here.
Judge McMartin.
Yes.
Judge Pratt. Judge Hernandez.
Judge Chaplin.
Judge Chaplin, I'm sorry, Judge Chaplin.
Present.
Okay, so unfortunately, we don't have a bigger room because there are tours of students in the courtroom and we're trying to accommodate folks as best as possible. We have an opportunity to have public comment. I should note for the record and for people who are watching on the YouTube channel that members of the committee have often been given substantial amounts of written testimony that has been submitted to the committee distributed to all the members of the committee. I suspect some of the folks who are going to testify have also written comments. I should also mention that if anybody wants to additionally provide written comments, they can, we would still accept them and they would be distributed to the committee. But for this, for the public hearing, we have several people who are signed up and our rules say that we are happy to hear from anybody for five minutes. And in five minutes, I'll just kind of give you a high sign and ask you to wrap it up if that's okay. All right, so our first participant is Jeff Clayton. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Justice McDonald, members of the panel. My name is Jeff Clayton, I'm the executive director of the American Bail Coalition. I'm an expert in bail and bail reform in the 50 states, even though I do work for an industry. I've spent a lot of time working on this issue, darn near 30 years of working on it. What I can tell you, top of the line here on partially secured bails is really ought to push people to O.R. releases. The national data from the U.S. Department of Justice, which I cite in my papers clearly shows that release on O.R. performs about as well as release on partially secured bails. So I don't think getting into the business, even though we've already done that, is where we need to go. I think the, this is a shortcut for judges to not release people on their own recognizance when they should. Also, and I didn't cite this, but the University of Chicago Journal of Law and Economics article called "The Fugitive" clearly shows that long-term fugitive rates are reduced by the involvement of bail agents who have arrest powers. And I, you know, we haven't seen data from the Senate Commission that suggests this, but the data from the bail agents suggests bail agents can post the partial secured amount. And Washington State Supreme Court and others, the Briggs case, have all held in other states that if there's a partial secured amount, the bail bondsman gets to post it. And the reason for that is we're more effective at the partially secured bills than cash would be because we have arrest powers. So I think that's a potential undoing of this rule. Obviously, it'd be a matter of first impression before the court as to whether that right exists in Connecticut. Of course, the word "security", maybe that throws a wrench in the constitutional language because it doesn't say "right to sufficient sureties" in Connecticut. It says "right to sufficient security," so maybe that's a wrinkle. But I, in the legislative history, I couldn't find any reason why that language was used compared to the other 30 states. So I think that's an issue that may undo all this. Also, from an equal protection perspective, we know that partially secured bonds do not outperform fully secured bonds. And thus, there's no reason to say that somebody cannot use a bail bondsman on a partial secured amount because we can argue that it will perform equally as well and probably better. And so I think that'll be a problem when defendants begin to say, hey, I should be getting, I should be getting even a greater discount, which in essence would be seven tenths of 1% of the appeal amount if a bail was allowed to post a partially secured amount. Other state Supreme Courts have said that it's a legislative purview, rate setting, whether the court should get into the business of acting as a surety should be authorized specifically by the legislature. And so I think that's a consideration that may also undo this, that there's no statutory authority for this rate. And that, you know, why is it this rate? I would also point out that other states have, there is no automatic 10% to the court, and no other state has done less than 10%. It's always an option for the judges to say, we want to do 10% in this particular case or not. This is akin to a bail schedule. It's a, you know, a setting before, basically an ex parte setting before they're able to see the judge. Final point I'll make is that, you know, this seems like an innocent move, but what we've seen in other states is it's ripe for abuse. If your argument is three points some million should go back to defendants, my argument would be you shouldn't have taken it in the first place. What ends up happening over time is that this money becomes a target. It becomes a target for fines, fees, cost restitution, and surcharges. It becomes a target for funding the state Supreme Court system like Indiana, where numerous small bonds are put out to fund the system because the legislature won't adequately fund it. In South Carolina and Missouri, it has become the target of defense lawyers who lean the funds and get assignments from defendants when the funds are posted, which then becomes a argument against the expansion of the public defender service. And so it's ripe for abuse. But I think at the top line, you just don't need it. I think the art of this game is forcing more O.R. releases and identifying where bail is not available, not doing partially secure. So I've encouraged you not to make this rule change. And I thank you for your time. I've submitted written comments, and certainly if there's any other questions I may answer or any assistance I may provide, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Dan Tonner?
Sir. Good morning, your honors. Justice McDonald, members of this committee. Thank you for the semi-public hearing. It's a little bit difficult because we have a ton of people out there, and I certainly want to recognize their efforts to come here despite the fact that they may not be comfortable speaking. So I hope you're here with an open mind and having drawn some already formed your opinions on the 2024 rule change, hearing from the public, and in this case, major stakeholders, is critical in making informed decisions. Yeah, my name is Dan Tonner. I'm the president and CEO of 3D Bail Bonds, one of Connecticut's larger bail firms. I've been posting bonds and holding people accountable for court appearance for nearly 30 years. As you recall, in 2019, the Sentencing Commission requested this panel to consider a rules change to the practice book allowing 10% option on bonds 20,000 or less. We complied with their request and made it effective January 1 of 2020. We studied the pre-trial incarceration outcomes from January 1 of 2020, the inception of it, through the end of last month, and we found that the total bondable pretrial incarceration has increased by 17%. Hispanic pretrial incarceration increased by 28%. Black pretrial incarceration increased by 11%. The number of people held on bonds 20,000 and under, the exact people we're trying to affect here, has remained stagnant, and on the day we did the report, it was up three, three people. So it's not, this didn't work. It's not working. So the change that was supposed to lower incarceration rates has failed. Additionally, the average bond on people are posting bonds is up by 70%. I'm sorry, the average bond on people being held is up 70%. The average size of the bonds posted in our study is up by 120%. The number of surety bonds written is about half of what it was. So when the 2022 Sentencing Commission created another report that stated accurate failure to appear conclusions could not be drawn due to the impact of the coronavirus pandemic had on judicial branch operations and prolonged case dependency. We studied the data well, and as of year-end 2022, we concluded the 10%, the 10% option cleared about 55% of their failures to appear, as opposed to the surety bail clearing 83% of their failures to appear. So a grade that we all can kind of understand is surety bail received a B while the 10% option failed. According to their own report, the rules change of 2020 did not work for Connecticut. We went from the gold standard in pretrial release, presumed innocent people be in jail, more of them. This commission has made very sharp and accomplished governmental employees, the sentencing commission, very sharp and accomplished governmental employees, and there are signs that they missed the mark, including important stakeholders, when they made these decisions. They didn't speak to the public. They didn't speak to many criminal defendants. They didn't speak to those held on bond. They didn't speak to those who were released on bond and those that were released on a 10% option. They didn't speak to those people. We don't just get them out. Bail agents don't just get them out like the 10% option does. We provide court date reminders. We contact them. We call. We text. We find a way to reach them. We provide rides when necessary. We answer their questions 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Thank you. I'm finishing up. Thank you. Answer their questions all the time. We help navigate the courthouse, accompany them to the clerk's office, public defenders, prosecutor, bail, anywhere they need to go, we're there with them. So we communicate with their loved ones on the outside. We get messages to them on the inside, and when court personnel allows, we do get message to them on the inside, tend to get them on track. But most importantly, and what this whole thing is about, is we hold those we release accountable for their court appearance. If they miss, we bring them back at no cost to the taxpayer. There's ability to cross city, state, country lines for this purpose. Here, we find ourselves three years later, considering a 2024 rule change that will eliminate surety bail and 1,000 jobs we provide. The rule change failed and is raising, and raising it will eliminate the bail size, exasperate pretrial incarceration, and with no plan to recover fugitives. There are over 1,000 active, 14,000 active FTA warrants right now as we speak from January 1 of 2020. An honest look at the data says that we need to cancel the automatic 10% option and bring the decision back to the capable, competent, and informed arraignment court judges in our criminal courts. Not enhanced failure. Thank you for the time and attention. Thank you for the extra 46 seconds. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to us.
Well, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Boon?
My name's Yentor Blom, and I'm here to share my knowledge and perspectives with you of professional surety bonds. I've had a professional surety bonds agent for the last 27 years. Three years ago, an automatic 10% option on low-level offenses, bonds 20,000 or less, was initiated. The stated purpose essentially was that it was going to help poor and non-white defendants the opportunity to bail out and get their money back because they, there were so many people being held on bail 20,000 or less that could not get out and couldn't afford to use the bondsman. This has failed. It's failed. As of January 1, 2020, there were 409 bondable people in prisons in Connecticut on bonds 20,000 or less, and today there are 412. It's actually gone up by three, three people. Doesn't sound like a lot, but those three people, it is a lot. Those three people are being held. They wouldn't have been held necessarily. There are an overall increase, there was an overall increase of 469 unsentenced individuals, even though the total inmate population has decreased by almost 20%. There was an increase of 373 non-white defendants. This is not achieving what was promised. The average bond size of those detained who have not made bail has increased, as Dan said, by 71%. What was the goal, and why do we think this is happening? Is that judges are setting higher bail because they want somebody looking for the person if they miss court? In the end, who benefited from the 90% discount of posting cash for release? It was a 90% discount on cash bonds, which the number of a bond put up by the judge in the first place. You know, who benefited from, people from the wealthier suburbs, because not the people in the cities. The people in the cities, the less fortunate people had to continue using bondsman and doing payment plans. Now you want to increase that, now it's proposed to increase that discount to 93% across the court on bonds 50,000 or less. This goes into competition, direct competition with the bail industry that has to charge a little bit more than that overall. Maybe those who live in the outside cities will be able to afford that. And who holds them accountable? In the end, who holds them accountable? There are, right now, over 44,500 arrest warrants, active warrants, in the judicial database as we speak, 44,500. Of those, 14,251 of them are for failure to appear from January 1, 2020, when the 10% option started, the automatic 10% option started. 14,251 active as we speak since that started. That, you know, who's going to serve these warrants if it's not surety bail agents? Are we going to ask the taxpayers to foot the bill of hiring a warrant squad? And by the way, 14,251, this is 30 per page. That's all of them. Every one of them, their names. I pulled them from the state's database, so it's not anecdotal. I have them. My data comes from a report, oh, I apologize, I got off, the Senate Commission's 2022 report failed to provide data on FTA's and arrests. It claims the data was not available. Well, it blamed COVID for its shortcomings. I won't, and I have the data. The data is obtained from reports from judicial records on an annual basis, as well as data pulled from the weekly, pulled weekly, I pulled the weekly warrants every week from the state's website. I pull down every arrest warrant issued, and I make a copy of them and keep them in spreadsheets. Surety bail has a success rate better than 83% at recovering its failures to appear, even though we only get the worst of the worst. We're only getting the people that were the worst ones that did not get a promise to appear, did not get a small bond 20,000 or less. We're left with the worst of the worst, and we still have an 83% success rate where those who get released without financial conditions have a success rate of 54%. All other forms of pretrial release average around 54% of recovery. That's to say, we're 31% better at doing our job because that is our job. That's the only way those who are not on surety bonds ever get served, is if they get arrested in the commission of another crime, such as stealing cars, catalytic converters, burglaries, and assaults. If the intent is not to return those who fail to appear in court, then I'm afraid that is where our system is broken. If we don't care if they go to court, then why arrest them in the first place? Crime is up, violent crime is up. Not holding defendants accountable for their appearance in court denies victims their right to be heard. If citizens of Connecticut wanted to live in crime and violence like New York City, they would move there. Please stop this unsafe move towards eliminating surety bail. Surety bail does its job allowing defendants to remain free, allowing them to keep their jobs, giving the court date reminders, offering payment plans to those who need and who need it, and ensuring appearance of those accused, of the accused, so victims have their day in court. In the end, that's what really matters, accountability. Accountability matters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Apologize for rambling.
I was trying to get to my time. Don't worry. It's almost better. I don't know if this is distracting or helpful to see.
I think it's actually a little more distracting.
I would agree. I'm learning. You know, it really is an interesting scenario that failure to appear is what people, people want.
Again, if anybody wants this list, I printed it this morning.
14,251 defendants.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll do it in three minutes.
Yeah, to bend it off the green light, red light.
Right.
I took branches and piped that.
Right.
Hello?
Good morning.
Are you Mr. Thompson?
I'm Johnny Flynn.
You're Johnny Flynn, okay.
I know your brother.
Okay.
From Rington.
Which one?
Peter.
Okay.
I know your dad.
Okay, and your name, sir?
Brent Thompson.
Okay. So let me recap your, we are hearing public testimony. You have five minutes to testify before the committee. Hey, can the keeper of time, I have it here, apparently it's distracting if I just show it, so I'll turn it around and show you that four minutes so that you know you have one minute left. Is that fair?
That's fine.
All right. So the next person to testify then is Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, your honors. My name is Brent Thompson. I've been a duly licensed bail enforcement agent here in the state of Connecticut for the past 21 years. I'm licensed by and through the Connecticut State Police Special Licensing and Fire Unit. I'm testifying today against the proposed rule change. Working as a bail enforcement agent, it is my responsibility to apprehend defendants who have willfully failed to appear in court. This is done with no cost to the taxpayers. When a defendant enters a civil contract between the bondsman and themselves, this is where our powers as a bail enforcement can come from. This is a civil contract which allows more latitude for finding and apprehending the defendant. I've traveled the country to bring back defendants who have willfully missed their court. Again, this was no expense to the taxpayers. Others have testified regarding the numbers of forfeitures. I am here to speak on the jurisdictions who have essentially eliminated surety bail. Once this was enacted, the crime rate has significantly risen. I live in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. I can tell you for a fact, there has not been surety bail for years. The cash bail is a complete travesty. Crime has been on the uprights for years. Most recently, New York has changed their bail laws. Again, crime is on the rise. New Jersey and California have done the same, same results. I personally see a pattern. Those jurisdictions are looking to reenact surety bail. Just last month, my team and I were able to work closely with law enforcement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We had a defendant who willfully missed court here in Connecticut. He was living in Springfield, Massachusetts, and going between Springfield and West Springfield. Through our investigation and weeks of surveillance, we were able to locate his vehicle and worked with West Springfield Police, were able to initiate a traffic stop. After going to court in Massachusetts for future injustice and an outstanding warrant in Springfield, he was extradited back to Connecticut. The family of his victims were able to receive closure. The victim's wife had passed away before she was able to have closure. According to the husband, he feels his wife passed away from the stress of not having closure. This case was able to be closed mostly from the hard work of our team of bail enforcement agents. In the last month, we brought back three defendants from out of state, none of which would have been brought back without our work. This again, at no cost to taxpayers. Defendants were brought back into the system to face the charges they were accused of. As numbers which were previously testified using surety bail, more defendants are brought back to the courts than those who are on the 10% cash option. This number is more than double. By continuing the use of surety bail, more victims and their families can get closure. Local state law enforcement just do not have the manpower to look for and serve all the failure to appear warrants. This is where surety bail has proven effective. Please vote no to move forward on this important matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Flynn?
I'm going to stick to the affidavit, and if I have extra time, I may add a few comments. But I'm here today to speak about spoliation doctrine and election law. I ran for U.S. Senate against Richard Lumenthal, and I spent four years canvassing the state. I spent a substantial amount of money. I collected 57,962 signatures, electronic and handwritten. I submitted them on August 3 to the Secretary of State. Every single one was refused. I came back on the next available appointment, which was August 9. I submitted 57,962 signatures. They were all refused, and they changed the rules. They accepted the ballots. They put them on a pile in the floor. They were alphabetized. They told me to come back the following day with alphabetized ballots. They mixed the towns and the people together, and they threatened me with arrest, Ada Carini and Ted Bromley, Bernard Liu, the whole staff, basically. So I've been collecting affidavits of all their testimony over time. What I can tell you is that they are all liars. I sued them in, prior to the election, I put an injunction on Lumenthal race. I am deeply concerned about the 7WW election law that COVID relief executive order of Governor Lamont that reduced the signature guidelines to make it easier so you didn't have to shake everyone's hand during COVID, which is completely reasonable. They allowed for electronic signature. Every electronic signature I gathered through 40 different emails, I sent 1.5 million emails out. I got 57,000 people interested in putting me on the ballot. I targeted primarily the independent party, though I'm a Republican. I don't trust the Republicans either. So I diligently canvassed the state every fair, had a huge staff, spent a substantial amount of money. I was not put on the absentee ballot because Mr. Bromley said, the state of Connecticut can have, we need to ensure that there are no Trump supporters ever elected to Connecticut again. And he circulated thousands of letters with different towns, which I have the letters, West Hartford, Guilford, there's a long list of letters that went out. Ted Bromley has been fired. No one knows it. I didn't learn it until the other day. He was fired six weeks ago. He is the Director of Elections. So when I go through my letter, as I said, I wasn't put on the absentee ballot nor the regular election ballot. The problem here is that 12 candidates were injured the same way I was. 12 candidates, candidates collected 10,000 signatures each, and only needed 7,500. The Lamont executive order reduced that number by 30%. I roughly needed only 5,000 signatures. I gave 11 times the amount. I figured what was working for me was cheaper to send an email than a registered, I did send 20,000 registered letters. I sent all types of canvassing. I did all kinds of things. I'm currently suing Connecticut for the 5G. There's 33 defendants. 5G is harmful. I just talked to Lamont the other day. I asked him point blank, Governor, is 5G safe? He says, I have no idea. Well, let me tell you, I'm a scientist. I own a biotechnology firm. My background is immaterial. What I said in my letter here is I have the GEMS documents. GEMS is a collection for the tabulator machines at every election poll, every polling station. The knowing system attached to GEMS allows the Secretary of State to change the vote. Connecticut hacked Oklahoma, Alabama, Massachusetts, Mississippi, five, four swing states, Vermont, Wisconsin, Michigan, and the fact is, I have the entire database of the hack. I tried to sequester the election. They destroyed it intentionally after my request. They are criminals, and I intend to put them all in jail. The case I have is so damaging that if you knew what LHS was, you'd be quite surprised and alarmed that I can hack this entire election system with my phone and change the vote myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And?
Anna Bankleth.
Okay, so do we have videos first? I don't know if you were in the room, you have five minutes to testify. I'll turn this around at four minutes so you know that you have a minute to wrap up.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Members of the Rules Committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in support of the proposed rule change for Rule 388 to expand the 10% cash jail option. My name is Anna Bankleth, and I'm an associate professor at the University of Connecticut School of Law and the Director of the Criminal Defense Connaught Fair, and I am also a member of the Sentencing Commission. I have researched and worked on issues related to the economic burdens of the criminal system involvement and the impact of fines, fees, and bail on poor communities. I support the revision to Rule 388 because it mitigates the financial burdens of criminal system involvement with no demonstrated increase in risk to public safety. The revision would build on the success of the previous rule change that made it possible for individuals to deposit some bond amounts with the court and to receive money at the end of the case. There is no rationale for requiring individuals who have paid a percentage of their bond amount in exchange for release to forfeit that money permanently, even when they have complied with all of the pretrial obligations that complied with all of the pretrial obligations that the court has placed on them. The proposed revision mitigates against two particular risks of the current regime. First, the provision protects against the risk that a person will be unnecessarily incarcerated pretrial. The current measure targets those with lower bond amounts of $50,000 or less. Such bonds contemplate that the individual may be released and so do not reflect judicial determination that the individual presents a risk of flight or danger to the community such that pretrial detention is the only option. When an individual is incarcerated pretrial on a low bond amount, the conclusion is inescapable that they are held simply as a result of their little status. For individuals who can be released, and in many cases are going to be released to the community anyway as soon as they can come up with the funds, for these individuals, lowering the financial barriers to their release and enabling a quicker release is critical. Where people have to spend several days gathering the funds necessary for their release, the impacts can be devastating. It can take only a few days of incarceration for an individual to lose their job, their apartment, or their children, and even a few days of pretrial incarceration can have long-term downstream consequences. Studies comparing similarly situated defendants have found that those who are detained pretrial are more likely to receive prison sentences and longer sentences than those at similar risk levels who are released, and that they are also more likely to commit crimes in the future. Research comparing two groups of similarly low-risk individuals, those who were detained pretrial, even for just a few days, were more likely to commit new crimes pretrial than those who were incarcerated for less than twenty-four hours following arrest. The proposed revision mitigates the harm of wealth-based cash bail system by lowering the financial barriers that keep low-risk and low-income individuals from securing their immediate release. Second, the proposed revision reduces the financial impact of being released. The court-operated cash bail option returns money to the individual rather than forcing low-income families to forfeit the premium to a bail bond industry that is not subjected to the same transparency and oversight as the court system. Expanding the court-operated cash bail option helps low-income families and other innocent cosigners to avoid getting trapped in predatory contracts and allows them to use the funds that otherwise would be forfeited towards basic needs like rent, food, and childcare. The burden of having to rely on a private bail industry falls most heavily on those who can least afford it. According to a 2022 report by the US Commission on Civil Rights, individuals and families, quote, "from low socioeconomic backgrounds are more likely to rely on the private bail industry and are more likely to accrue debt long after case disposition regardless of whether there is a condition." Expanding the use of the court deposit system helps families avoid the worst of these effects while creating no greater risk to the community. It is also simply more humane to return the bail deposit to low-income individuals and families at the closing phase. For all of these reasons, I support the revisions to Rule 38-8.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who are here to testify?
No, she, this individual may come. I think she went to a different courthouse.
Okay, but there's, there's nobody now who wants to testify. Okay. Um, then on Microsoft Teams, um, we have two people who have signed up. Is Mr. Whitlock, could you engage your camera and microphone?
Good morning.
Good morning. I uh, don't know if you heard me previously, but um, I will, I don't know, uh, you're not gonna be able to see my timer. I will just try to wave at four minutes to, to let you know that you have about a minute left.
I, I should be able to get in under, in record time, so no problem.
Okay. Please proceed.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak today in opposition to the proposed rule change to Section 38-8, uh, the 7% cash bail option. Uh, my name's Mike Whitlock, Executive Vice President of American Surety Company. Our company has been a corporate citizen of Connecticut for more than three decades. During my forty years working in the commercial bail profession, I have seen various pretrial release options introduced to replace the use of criminal appearance bonds, also known as bail bonds. Uh, those would be pretrial release services, risk assessments, zero bail, and the overreliance on ankle monitors in home detention. The one option that has caused me the greatest concern is the 10% deposit bail scheme, otherwise known, uh, commonly referred to as the 90% discount. This scheme has shaken my confidence in the concept of judge's discretion. 10% cash deposit bail and now the proposed 7% cash bail or deposit bail is an obvious attempt by the court to monetize pretrial release to the benefit of the court. It is disingenuous for a judge to claim depositing a mere 10% of the set bail amount in cash is more effective than a bail bond secured by a third-party indemnification executed by a licensed surety bail agent on behalf of an admitted surety company that provides 100% financial guarantee of a defendant appears in court. Produce or pay is the nature of our business. So now the judge will set a bail at, say, twenty thousand, and then immediately reduce that amount by ninety percent, uh, with the proposal to go as much as ninety-three percent, but will only take cash for the amount and not allow bail bond to be posted equal to the 10% amount or effectively the new, the new bail amount. The 10% cash bail scheme only benefits the court, who will deduct fines and costs from the deposit or seize the entire amount if the defendant fails to appear, not even attempting to collect the unsecured ninety percent of bail. Common sense tells you if a judge believes only 10% of the bail amount that is, is sufficient to secure defendants for release, then the reduced amount should be the real or the total bail amount. It'll be more affordable for the defendant who can purchase a bail bond for seven percent of that amount. They would then be out on supervised release, which benefits the crime victim and public safety. Common sense also tells you if a judge believes bail should be immediately reduced by ninety percent or a proposed ninety-three percent, why not just release the defendant on zero bail? The only reason is the court cannot profit from zero bail. I ask this committee to vote no on this effort by the court to continue its endeavors in the bail bond business, competing with the private sector and using the pretrial release system to feather its own nest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, and I believe Judge Pavia um, has signed up as well to testify. Judge Pavia, could you engage your microphone and camera?
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Justice McDonald, and all members of the Rules Committee. I thank you for allowing me to address you this morning. I am here on behalf of the Connecticut Sentencing Commission. Seated with me is Alex Sarkov, um, who is the Executive Director of the Sentencing Commission. We are here seeking revision of the Connecticut Practice Book Rule 38-8, which um, has been the subject of much discussion this morning. Specifically, the proposal addresses two distinct aspects. We are seeking to reduce the current 10% cash bail option to a 7% option, and then secondly, to increase the maximum bond amount from twenty thousand to fifty thousand. By way of history, prior to 2020, the automatic cash bail option was available only at arraignment before judge upon request made by a defendant. In 2019, an amendment to the Connecticut Practice Book was proposed, which would allow for the 10% cash bonds for sureties of $20,000 or less. This proposal additionally allowed for the cash bond to be used at the police departments for the first time. This proposal took effect January of 2020. Since that time, the Sentencing Commission and the judicial branch have tracked implementation of this new rule. We have seen incredible utilizations. You do have our written comments, and I won't go through all the statistics because I know you have that. I just wish to highlight a few statistics, which are that since that time, what we have seen is that 60% of the bonds posted at the police department have used this 10% cash option. The 10% bonds predominantly are used for lower bonds, under $1,000. In fact, 80% of defendants with bonds under $1,000 utilized this option. The defendants with higher bonds continue to use the professional surety. I know that's been an issue in terms of whether or not this is seeking to eliminate sureties. It, it does not eliminate sureties, and in fact, we are seeing that the sureties are still being used specifically for those higher bonds. Between January 20th and September 20, of 22, I'm sorry, January of 2020 and September of 2022, nearly $4 million has been returned to defendants throughout the state. We have noticed also, um, through tracking, that the failures to appear and rearrest rates remain comparable to those using sureties. The current proposal simply incrementally builds on the success of this 2020 of reform. It um, asks specifically to do this because what we have witnessed is that defendants who are struggling to afford that 10% cash bond are being detained on low-level offenses. As you know, the Sentencing Commission is comprised of stakeholders from all facets of the criminal justice system. This proposal is the result of a deliberative process undertaken by this diverse group of individuals throughout Connecticut, was overwhelmingly endorsed by the commission, and thus submitted to you. I appreciate your time today. I and Alex are here if you have any questions for us, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else who wants to testify, but can you just? That's the end of the people who've signed up, but if anybody is still here and wants to testify. That's it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so nobody else is here who wishes to testify before the committee? So I will, um, move to public hearing this time. And does anything need a break, or should we move right into the committee meeting? Okay. Better file. All right, um, I will call to order the uh, May 8th, 2023 meeting of the Rules Committee. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 13th, 2023 meeting. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Oops. The move?
Uh, moved by Judge McLaughlin. Seconded?
Second.
Judge Pearson. Uh, are there any changes or amendments?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, on page two, um, my apologies, number three, um, in the third paragraph, um, it should simply say section, where the section was not inserted there, so with that, that's the one change.
I'll put a scripter's error. Uh, it's been moved, seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Proposed no. That counts unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 2022-020, proposal to amend Practice Book Section 17-51 to explicitly permit the entry of summary judgment based on a defense. That defense only affects part of a claim. Um, we have two new, um, pieces of information, committee, please, I'll move on to summarize.
Yes, Your Honor, this was last, um, considered on February 6th. Judge Stewart did assemble a workday to review the proposal, and I believe she's here to testify on it.
I am here.
She's not testifying.
I'm not really testifying, but I could still. So as you will recall, I made the proposal because of some confusion in the case law, and because frankly, I did not think that, uh, current Practice Book Section 1751 was written very well for a number of reasons. So, um, when we last met on this subject, the CTLA submitted a letter, uh, in which they expressed their opposition, and in response to that, uh, this committee decided it would be the best approach to have a task force, uh, to work with a representative of the CTLA, representative of the Connecticut Defense Lawyers Association. Uh, so we put together a task force that consisted of Judge Pearson, uh, that consisted of Eleanor Sterling from the Connecticut Trial Lawyers Association, Jennifer Booker, who's the current president of the Connecticut Defense Lawyers Association, and me. Uh, and we met a number of times and exchanged various drafts, uh, and I will point out uh, that Attorney Sterling was a very active participant in that process, uh, and in fact, she and her office did some research and provided us with a memorandum that discussed the use in our case law over the years of the terms count, cause of action, and claim. Uh, and we realized, it appears to us that when the summary judgment rules were, uh, put into the Practice Book in the first place, sometime after the Rules Nameling Act for the federal rules, someone took the claim nomenclature from the federal rules and put it into our Practice Book. If you look at the Practice Book, it doesn't use claim elsewhere, uh, for these types of things. Instead, it talks of counts and causes of action, and when claim is used in our case law, typically that is in terms of a claim for relief on a cause of action. So, you know, not everyone in the public here, part of this is gonna be able to see my little demonstration here, but you know, the way we looked at it is there's a count, and then within a count, there can be one or more causes of action, and then on a cause of action, there can be one or more claims for relief. Uh, and that's really how our case law and Practice Book for the most part refer to those terms. Uh, having said that, as a sideline, and we realize this is out of our jurisdiction, but uh, the appellate rules 61-3 and 61-4 inconsistent with one another. One of them refers as causes of action all the way through, and one uses claim. Uh, so that's for somebody else to look at, depending on where we go with this. I just note that for the record. So getting back to, uh, what we ended up doing was we took Section 1744, uh, which is the first of the summary judgment rules in our Practice Book, and in the two places it referred to claim, we proposed changing claim to cause of action. We have no other changes to that rule, and the sole purpose of that is to make it consistent with, if you look for, for example, through Chapter 10 of the Practice Book, where it talks about motions to dismiss and requests to revise and motions to strike and whatnot. They talk about, and for that matter, complaints and answers, they talk about cause of action. They don't talk about the claim. Uh, so, um, that was our first proposal. It is not in any way, our, our proposed change to 1744 is not in any way intended to change summary judgment practice. It's just to clean it up and make it consistent with the rest of the Practice Book and the case law. Then our second change was to frankly completely rewrite Section 1751. We basically not believe that there's anything in there that's salvageable, but the very first thing we did was to change the title. Right now, the title of Section 1751 is Judgment, not summary judgment, Judgment on Part of a Claim. Uh, and as you can see, we proposed changing the title to Summary Judgment as to Part of a Count. Because that's really what the cases were talking about, was not part of the claim. They were talking about part of a count. Um, the cases, the, the only Supreme Court case is the one actually referenced in CTLA's earlier, uh, letter, this Lone Star Industries case, which was an insurance coverage case. And in that case, Supreme Court, that, this wasn't the main point, but, uh, on, on the way to reaching its ultimate decision, did decide that because a particular count involved multiple insurance policies, and some of the defenses at issues replied, applied to some of those insurance policies, uh, so, and that's all part of a piece of looking at, if you can have a breach of contract claim on an insurance policy, and you could have multiple of those breach of contract causes of action in a single count, uh, and that has been used, that's one way in which 1751 has been used over the years. It's also been used in the situation where you have the statute of limitations, or not used, because never referred to a defense before. Statute of limitations addressed to a continuing violation. Uh, like I, you know, what brought my attention to this in the first place was the situation where there were a series of transactions. They were all referred to in the same count, but each one of those causes of action, each one of those transactions could be an individual breach of contract cause of action. So that's how we felt that this should be rewritten. Um, we also addressed, as you can see in the commentary, uh, instead of saying on part of a claim, that was rewritten in the days when you could only move for summary judgment on a complaint or a crossclaim or counterclaim, uh, we felt as to, uh, was a little more equal, even-handed. Uh, we dealt with the fact that the language of the world for, referred to final judgment is not really correct, uh, at that stage, uh, and just making sure. Oh, they also, it also had if it appears, as opposed to the standard for granting a summary judgment. So we got rid of if this appears and put in the language, um, just like the rest of the summary judgment rules have for when summary judgment ought to be granted. In other words, In other words, when there's no genuine issue material fact, not if it appears that final judgment is appropriate. So those are the kinds of fixes that we made. I did read this morning, I actually spoke with Ms. Sterling late last week, and so I was aware that the CTLA would be sending a letter indicating that they are still opposed. I would note, I read it very quickly today, that despite the fact that Attorney Sterling was very active and probably really the thought leader in changing the nomenclature, the cause of action, and changing the title to part of a count, they are referring to claims. We are not, I want to make clear, the rule is not intended to get rid of part of the claim, in other words, you know, some paragraph on the way that you're making a claim. It's intended to, if a cause of action can be severed from another cause of action in the count, it's intended to direct that and only that. And if it can't be severed, or if the judge, for some reason, in an exercise of his or her discretion, does not believe that summary judgment should be granted, then it won't be granted, but that was really our intent. I do agree with the CTLA that there is some possibility that once the rule is changed, there will be some, I think frankly, small increase in motions filed under the rule. I personally think that'll be short-lived. I do not see that happening in a motor vehicle case where the only claim is negligence, and I don't think it's wise to do, as they have their alternative suggestion, to keep tort cases out of the mix. I do think that that's not an appropriate response. And finally, I will mention that I at least have given some serious thought, just dropping 1751 out of the practice book altogether. I don't think that solves the issue that I was originally concerned with, which is that the case law is very confused, confusing, and I do think that summary judgment would be appropriate in some situations where you have more than one cause of action in account, and either there's a defect with that cause of action, or such summary judgment is appropriate, or there's a reason based on a defense, typically with statute of limitations, some causes of action should not go forward. That's what I have to say.
First, thank you for all the work that you and Judge Pearson and others put into this. I have to tell you, I guess I need to think about some of this because the terminology is confusing. I've always considered, I could be wrong, I've always considered a cause of action to be the nucleus of operative facts.
Correct.
That could give rise to multiple claims, and that each of those claims is set out in a separate count of the complaint. And maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that's the, well, that should, each of those, yeah, if you are in federal court, you'd use that claim nomenclature all the time, no question. If you look at the federal rule, they use claim.
Right, so I was just trying to come up with an example, so if, that's our example, so there's a negligent operation of a motor vehicle, and somebody hits my car, and they get out of their car, and then they come over and pummel me for no reason, and my spouse is sitting next to me and watches the whole thing. I could see one count being the negligence, one count being the battery, you know, one count being bystander emotional distress, and so those are different claims, all of which come under the operative nucleus of, the nucleus of facts, the fact pattern, which is the event that created the causes of action.
Well, I think I might disagree with you, because I would say negligence is a cause of action, bystander emotional distress is a cause of action, and battery is a cause of action. And in that scenario, where each one is, regardless of whether you want to call it a cause of action, where each one is parked in its own separate count, this rule wouldn't apply. It would only apply if for some reason they were all glombed together and somebody missed the vote on filing a request to revise to separate that.
I see what you're saying.
So, you know, where, where I'm trying to make it, why, where we were trying to fix the rule is where you say part of a claim, which is what the current rule says, and what I believe CTLA is concerned about, where you're talking about you only have a cause of action for negligence, and somebody is trying to, I don't even understand how that would work, honestly, but get summary judgment on part of that. I could see for a defense, you know, if it was not my continuing violations type of thing, but it was continuing cause, conduct, course of conduct, if somebody said, I don't see how that could be, I guess is.
An example, an example I might use is, and you see it quite a lot, say there's a breach of contract claim, and you see this frequently, count one, breach of contract, and then there will be 17 different ways listed in one, in a single count, as to how you have breached that contract, because how awkward would it be that you separate each one of those alleged breaches into 17 counts? So that, that's a more, in my experience, that's a more common scenario where you see that conflation of, or the blending of what may be separate causes of action, because, right?
That also apply in a negligence case, okay, there are five specifications of negligence. Does that mean there are five causes of action?
See, I personally don't think so. I mean, I could see it, and that's why I understand where they are coming from.
And how many names dance on the head of a pin, right?
Yeah, I just don't, I don't, I don't see that.
The breach, negligent.
Yes.
Specifications of different breaches, specifications of negligence, I don't see the difference.
Right. Well, except that there's a temporal difference, usually.
There can be.
Right? Because it's usually, you know, you breached the contract on May 1st by doing this and May 6 by not doing that, whereas in the negligence claim, it all happens at one.
I agree, that's, but even so, contracts can be breached multiple times on different, at different occasions, but.
Also are.
It's all.
Right, it could happen, right.
But it couldn't happen.
This is why this is such a sticky.
Right, but I mean, we feel like that we're never going to achieve.
I got facts, Judge.
Lots of lawyers can cook up, and CTLA has a good point in that regard, people will cook up things. I personally think our proposal is far better than what's in there right now for a number of reasons.
But we're shocked that it's reported to be light, this could. So I don't know, I do think it's better for sure. Wondering. About this.
Oh, I do not expect anybody to have none, but I think that those of us who, you know, probably this corner of this table, deal with these issues the most, should give some heavy thought to it, and I realize that Judge Pearson and I are ahead of you on that.
Have you shared this with Judge Bellis?
No, I'm certainly happy to have that sent to her and have her.
That's how I'm punting today.
Yeah, yeah. I think it needs, I think it needs to be fun today, because I, even though I have gotten my head into this maybe more than some, I still feel as if I need to think about it more, because I'm concerned, you know, it concerns me that we may, I don't want to get it wrong, right, because it's such.
This would confuse a lot of people.
Correct.
I think there needs to be some education, you know, televising it to the CBA civil section, to the Judge Bellis, it needs to be populated. I think we need some more voices to take that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, with the commentary, which we recognize is much wordier than you would necessarily put into any ultimate legal change that's needed to explain.
And with all the work, with all the work that's been done, one might make a colorable argument that better the devil I know than the devil I don't, which is to say, live with this hideously written 1751, but at least we have some sense of how it's been dealt with. One could make the argument.
So one of your committee focuses on the screen, Attorney Sterling, did you want to say anything?
No, Your Honor, I don't need to address you all now. I wanted to be here in case there were questions. I agree with the general sentiment that this is potentially very far-reaching changes, and obviously, from the discussion already, there is a potential for confusion, so it makes sense to tread cautiously.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this project with these judges. So Judge Bellis needs to become aware of this. The CBA should be, actually not just the civil section, I mean, there are other.
Litigation section.
Litigation section. We'll probably want to weigh in on it. Anybody else that, anybody can think of?
Well, the CTLA and the CDLA have both seen this version. The CDLA, I was informed, had no comment, they were fine with it. I think, I thought we sent it to someone else before, I can't remember who that was, my original draft.
Anything else on that on this item? Okay. Yes, please. Okay, so the next item then is 2023-002, proposal to amend MCLE rule section 2-27A, and I think Attorney Weiner is here. He offline, he briefed me on this, so I'll turn this over to Attorney Weiner at this point, so he can brief the whole committee.
Good morning, Your Honors. Thank you for having me here today. Just to brief the Rules Committee on the status of this proposal, after, after the Rules Committee tabled it and referred it to the MCLE Commission, the MCLE Commission expressed some concerns about the initial proposal, so we submitted a revision that made some substantive changes to the proposal. The substantive changes were to reduce the hours available for judging high school mock trial from four hours to two hours. We eliminated the possibility of obtaining credit for judging middle school mock trial, and we also added in some requirements that were intended to address the MCLE Commission's concerns that the existing proposal didn't necessarily comply with the content requirement. That is, it didn't have sufficient intellectual or practical rigor to warrant the award of CLE credit. So we, our revised proposal requires that any mock trial or moot court that would be eligible for CLE credit at the high school level be sponsored by a court, bar association, or accredited law school, and would specifically require the attorney to consider and apply substantive legal principles, including but not limited to rules of evidence, and also to provide a critique of the competitor's performance. My understanding is the MCLE Commission met last week and similarly did not approve of the revised proposal, so at this point, the CBA would ask the Rules Committee simply to table this matter till its fall, until its fall meeting, so we can work on it further.
Thank you.
Unless, unless of course you have any questions.
All right, anybody have any questions for Attorney Weiner? Okay, so we'll table this for now, I appreciate that for more.
Okay, thank you, thank you for having me.
All right. Broadcasting upstairs. So the next item then is 2023-008, proposal to amend various practice book sections regarding the pathways process to family matters. Judge Alvis has been patiently waiting, appreciate being here.
Pleasure, thank you for giving me the chance to be here.
At this point, you wonder why you ever wanted to agree to be CHA to family.
The thought has occurred to me, but I have no regrets. I don't know how the committee would like me to proceed, I know at the last meeting we got into some details, and I'd benefit, the committee, I'd be happy to step back and talk a little bit generally about pathways, and then if there are comments or questions from the committee or others, I'd be happy to respond to them, but whatever your pleasure is, Justice McDonald.
I'm still confused, but I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around some of it, it's just, I never practiced in family, and I'm still trying to understand how this is going to impact practitioners and obviously their clients. I heard anecdotally, some people think the pathways is going well, other people think it's a train wreck, and I don't know where, you know, I don't know how to proceed at this point. I'm sort of like Judge Stewart's proposal, I'm just cautious as we, as we jump into, you know, hopefully a pile of rainbows, not a bottomless pit, and I don't know, and so I'm concerned, I guess is the best way to say it.
Well, why don't I explain what your thinking was behind it and how it came to be and the reason for the rule changes we proposed? So I know a lot of you have sat in family, but for those who haven't, previously, the process, I'll use a typical divorce case as an example. Once a divorce were filed, the court would schedule something called a case management date, about 90 days out from the return date, and at that date, the parties would theoretically report to the court by way of a written agreement, whether they expected to have a full agreement on everything, or whether only custody or only financial issues were in dispute, and we call that a limited contested matter, or whether there were both custody and financial matters in dispute, which was considered fully contested. And that agreement would also set forth a proposed discovery schedule, and the court would consider or most likely approve it, maybe with some changes. The two problems with that method, and especially keeping in mind that most litigants in family court do not have lawyers, that rule was often honored in the breach, especially where parties didn't have attorneys. I know that in cases where one side had an attorney and the other didn't, it was difficult for the attorney to perhaps persuade the other party that this was something that needed to be done and work out the details and file it, but even when it was filed, it didn't give the court a whole lot of information. Custody issues being in dispute could range from everything, from they both want, both parents want sole custody, to they can't agree what time the Tuesday night visits should end. So that was one element. The other element is that the rest of the process was driven really by the family short calendar, and the way that worked is that whenever a motion, virtually any motion was filed, it would appear on the short calendar, usually three to four weeks away, and then there was a process where the party that filed the motion in the week prior to the short calendar would have to indicate whether they really intended to go forward with it on that calendar and mark the matter ready, or mark it off, because perhaps they were working something out, or they had a schedule conflict, or had filed a motion in case it was needed, but didn't really wish to go forward yet. But if they marked it ready, and if the other side didn't get a continuance because they had a schedule conflict, the parties and their attorneys, if they had, then would appear in court the short calendar on the same day as dozens of other cases. I sit in Middletown, which is not one of the busier courts, but on a typical short calendar day, there might be 90 to 100 cases on the calendar, and maybe 65, 60 of those would have been marked ready, and I'd walk into a courtroom full of people, we'd call the roll to see who really, really had to go forward with their motion that day, and some people would ask for continuances, some wouldn't, and then whoever remained would be sent to talk to family services about the specific motion that they were there to litigate or to pursue that day. Often, family services help the parties reach an agreement, and they would come back to court, into court with that agreement, and the court would consider it. If they didn't have an agreement, then there might be a hearing that day if they really didn't need much time at all, but if they needed any significant amount of time, more likely, that matter would have to get postponed to another day for the hearing. I once did the math, and I computed that the average amount of time each case could have with the court on a typical short calendar in Middletown was five to six minutes. Sometimes I had help on the short calendar from other judges, sometimes I didn't, and that process would just repeat itself anytime anyone filed a motion, and we'd always be dealing with that motion that day. It was rare that the court and the parties had the opportunity to step back and take a look at the case as a whole and figure out where we were going. Eventually, after repeated trips to short calendar, it would become apparent that there were some serious issues, maybe serious custody issues, and perhaps the court should order an evaluation or appoint a guardian ad litem. By that time, we'd typically be months into the case, and that process would take a lot longer, and then eventually there'd be a trial scheduled. The system was not efficient, and I think short calendars are remembered far more finely in death than it ever was considered in life. And I think short calendars remembered far more finally in death than it ever was considered in life. You did have the certainty that when you filed a motion, it would come up on a calendar in a few weeks, and that was about it. And one thing litigants had very little certainty about was when their case would be over. You'd sort of keep doing this pending, delete, litigation until both parties eventually said, hey, we need a trial. We can't work out the main issues. The party, the stakeholder with the least certainty was probably the judge. There was no real way to prepare for short calendar. Those of you who have done it, no. You'd look at your calendar the week before, you wouldn't know which cases would be marked ready. And even if you did, there wasn't time to review all those cases. You wouldn't know which ones would really need a hearing and if that hearing would happen that day. And as a result, you were listening to parties, you had one eye on the clock because you had dozens more people. And the day was drawing to a close, waiting for their hearings. And if there were a hearing before you, you'd have to hastily review the file on the fly and listen to the parties and try to make a sound decision. And it wasn't an ideal way to do it. And you didn't have time, as I said, to consider the course of the whole case. I hope we really do get this case to a resolution and let these people move on with their lives. The final drawback of short calendar, and this was really brought home to me in 2019, when I was invited to a legislative public hearing that Senator Maez Lexer called, where several women spoke about litigation abuse. They had been the subject of abuse by their partners, often physical. But one form it took was that these abusers, who typically didn't have attorneys, that they knew the system. They could file motion after motion and drag that other party into court on a regular basis to the point where their jobs are at risk or they spent untold sums on childcare. And that was something that we considered as we planned the new process. We had help from the National Center for State Courts, which had done an exhaustive study and concluded and got the support of the Conference of State Court Chief Justices at the time to look into and implement ways of triaging cases early on, bringing the parties in early, assessing the needs of the case, and delivering those resources needed for the case at an early point to bring them to a quicker or efficient or comprehensive resolution. And with the help of the National Center, we developed the pathways approach. And in contrast to the old method, we now bring parties in on a divorce between 30 to 45 days after the return date. Not to have a contested hearing of any time, but to have an in-depth meeting first with Family Services to see what the issues are, see how likely it was the parties could resolve the issues on their own, determine a recommended level of resources for the case, especially where they were children, whether that could be by way of an evaluation or some other service from Family Services, or whether the more intensive need was for a guardian ad litem. After the parties meet with Family Services, they appear before a judge. And a judge can order the recommended services after giving the parties an opportunity to be heard and set a schedule for the case so that there's a plan. And it's not just random as far as, well, we'll come to court when somebody files a motion. And under that schedule, the court sets one or more case dates, which are intended as checkpoints along the way to bring the parties in, whether they've been filing motions or not, to hear the motions that they have filed, or if there's not time on the case date to schedule efficiently a hearing on the motion when the court will have time to hear it. And to assign the case to one of three tracks. Track A being the cases that essentially are resolved or very close to resolution the first time the parties come into court. And that's, that's fairly frequent. Track C, on the other hand, is for the most difficult cases that appear to require the highest level of resources. And Track B is where most cases fall, that the parties will need some court time. They might need a hearing. They might need a lower level of service from Family Services to address their parenting issues. But we ultimately think they'll be able to come to an agreement, they just need some help. So that's what happens at that first date, and then there's a plan for the case. Sometimes matters arise that can't wait for the next case date. A motion may be filed for child support or a custody issue. And either party at any time can request that a motion, a pending, a motion be placed on the motion dockets that we created last summer after discussions with the bar who brought home to us that the system we had prior to that to try to grant hearing times those motions wasn't working well. And I'll be the first to admit that it wasn't. So we established motion dockets, which in some ways resembles short calendar. The two main differences are that the presiding judge determines what gets put on the calendar and when, so that we can keep it to a manageable size, so that we can really give attention to the people who come that day. And in some cases decide this motion isn't that urgent. There's a case date coming up anyway in a few weeks, let's just deal with it then. But that has worked well by all reports. And in difference to differing opinions about how pathways has worked, I think the statistics show that it's working quite well. Because of the pandemic, we had one of the highest number of pending cases we ever had as we entered, I got into the early part of 2021. But last year, and I did send the committee some statistics, they've been updated. At the time that I wrote my letter, we had statistics for part of 2022 that showed that the pending caseload had been decreased in 2022 by 21.6%. That was partly through the year. The final figure at the end of the year was 28%. And I attribute that primarily to the fact that at the beginning of 2022 is when we started to be able to do most proceedings in person. And that's really the way pathways was intended. We were forced to implement pathways early. Because of the pandemic, we obviously couldn't have short calendar and packed courtrooms. We had to rely for most of 2020, once we got the capability in 2021, on virtual proceedings. And the pathways method of scheduling with fewer court events but for a more meaningful amount of time lent itself more to virtual scheduling than the old system did. But we were implementing pathways piecemeal in 2021, and there were issues, there were problems. We didn't have enough virtual hearing time to go around. It was hard to get time to hear a motion. But that changed dramatically when we began to be able to do things in person the way that the process was planned. We disposed of more cases in 2022 than we did in the last year before the pandemic by 13%. Disposed of more cases than in any year since, I think, 2013 or 14. But on the numbers, we also, especially with self-represented individuals, treated people in a way that made sense. We heard them, the process was explained to them early on. And the old process, in my view, in many ways, especially to parties without attorneys, was dehumanizing. We'd bring these people into court on a short calendar day. They didn't really know what was going on, they were bewildered. The attorneys clearly who knew how things worked were able to get in and out efficiently, and they should have been able to do that. And the latter part of the day was people sitting in court not knowing what was going to happen, that the court didn't have much time left for them. And we would sort of be able to stick a Band-Aid on their problem and send them on their way, and then they'd have to come back a couple of weeks later and go through it again. So I think the process is logical. It's in keeping with all the recommendations of Conference of State Supreme Court Justices and the National Center for State Courts. We're assessing cases early, we're putting them on the proper path to resolution. We're resolving them efficiently, and we're requiring people to spend less time in court, fewer trips to court, but more meaningful trips each time.
How many other states use a model akin to pathways?
I don't know of any other state that doesn't state why. At the time we were implementing it, we did look at other jurisdictions. There were around 12 other jurisdictions, none of which was a full state that was doing it. We have a lot of advantages in Connecticut. For one thing, we're a centralized court system. So where other states are heavily weighted toward county administration. And maybe one county was doing it, but not the whole state. We have a centralized system. And the other thing we have that I don't think any other state has is the Family Services personnel that work for us. And they, in my view, are a key to this process. And no one else I know has that. And we were doing some elements of this theory on a piecemeal basis. But having Family Services has enabled us to do it in a way that makes that resolution plan date, that first court appearance, very effective and in a way that other states can't do.
I mean, I just been a practical problem because I understand trying to make the system work better and for more people. And the information about self-represented parties is certainly, that just does something in a family courtroom, I totally understand that, I've never practiced in it. But, but I, the anger I've heard from practitioners is really, I've never seen anything like it. And interestingly, they don't want to poop their head above the firing line because they feel there's going to be some kind of, I don't know, retro, I don't know how there would be retribution. But they, there's a lot of chatter going on and nobody wants to stand up and say it. I don't know what's going on, is what it really comes down to. And I've heard it's, you know, it's a resource issue, I guess, in some ways. I've heard from practitioners that, you know, they can't get in front of a judge. And the gatekeeper, the Family Services, is, is determines whether you get to see a judge. I don't know if that's true.
That's not true.
Okay.
And I think that was the impression early on when we had to do things remotely, because again, the plan always was parties come in with their attorneys that they have, and they meet with Family Services, and then they walk directly into a courtroom. And we couldn't do that during the pandemic. And we tried to do it as best we could, but there'd be one virtual session set up with Family Services. The judge was probably in another remote hearing trying to put out some other fire. And there were times where I was able to leave or finish a hearing I was in and log into a, on a resolution plan date with Family Services. But that was hard to do. But it still wasn't that Family Services ever had the right to say, this is what you're doing in this case without a court order or you don't get to see the judge. If somebody wanted to come before a judge, we'd schedule it for another day. Otherwise, Family Services would give a memorandum of what that resolution plan date consisted of. More often than not, the parties were on board as to the next steps, and the judge would issue a scheduling order based on that. And I do think a lot of the frustration is born of the early days when we called it pathways because we were using elements of it, but we weren't really able to do it the way it was intended.
I, I mean, this may be old anecdotal stuff. I was talking to one attorney who said they needed a court date and they were given a date a year down the road. And that just shocked me, maybe because I'm the old guy who used to go to short calendar and you'd get, get some attention within a month or so. But, but I saw a scheduling order, it was a year. Astonishing to me.
But depending on what the event was.
It could have been old information in the system, I understand the system.
There was a time, having sat in Bridgeport and Family Court when the pandemic kicked, when Stanford was closed, Milford was closed, and all of Fairfield County, it's a very active family bar, all of them came to us. And they were getting gates that were pretty far out. They would meet with family very early on, virtually. And then they would get a virtual case date fairly far out because there were three of us trying to cover all of Fairfield County and into New Haven County. That changed, you know, fairly quickly when people came back on, you know, and courthouses started opening up again. But it was bad at first.
I've heard practitioners who are still, I mean, recently.
Well, Fairfield County is a whole different situ, oh, actually, oh, that's interesting. I have a question for you, actually. I listened very hard to, I questioned Attorney McNamara the last time we were here on this subject in March, I believe. And it, my understanding from her, and frankly, from the feedback I've gotten from judges and who are currently sitting in family and family practitioners since that meeting, is the main focus here is on, in terms of the rule changes are 2534 and 2550. Those are the rules. You have a whole lot of rules here, and I'm just thinking in terms of, for this committee, you know, whether we can do a little triaging here. I have not heard, you know, that people were up in arms about the other proposed changes. And perhaps we can just maybe focus in on 2534 and 2550, unless I'm mistaken. I mean, is there, are the people that are upset or are there things that are, people are upset about, about the other rules? Or am I correct that those are the two controversial rules? And my understanding, you know, from her testimony and responding to my questions and from other people, that the big issue is the case dates and now this motion calendar. People are upset about waiting for an opportunity in these most contested cases for their motions to hit a date and then not knowing exactly what's gonna be on that case date. And they're upset about the motion calendar, which I don't even know is really addressed in these rules. But I haven't heard anyone's upset about the triaging, if you will, in the first place, which I thought was frankly, an excellent idea for everybody, not just the self-represented people. But am I missing something? I mean, can we focus in on just those two rules and, and in the short term?
I, I think you're probably right. And I, I think the criticism of the case dates has been that, the idea was to have preset dates when the parties knew they were going to be coming to court and knew they'd have a chance to address their motions. In some cases, there are many motions pending, more than anyone could possibly hear on the case date. And the concern was that parties and attorneys couldn't prepare, they didn't know what might come up. I'll say that happened on short calendar too. There were multiple motions pending and we knew they wouldn't all be heard. But that was a legitimate concern, and we've been meeting with the bar for a year and a half regularly. And at one point, because of that concern, I issued a standing order that essentially said, prior to a case date, each party has to let the other one know if they've got more than one motion pending, which of their motions they intended to pursue, the order of priority, exchange some information. If they had a motion that they wanted to pursue but didn't expect there to be time to do it on the case date, to let us know that. And in my experience, that's worked well when the parties have done it. And it hasn't worked well when they haven't. Part of the rule that I'm proposing essentially takes elements of that standing order and puts it into the rule, hopefully to make it more commonly known that this is how the procedure is supposed to work. And at the bar's suggestion, we also prevented someone from filing a last minute motion before a case date and then expecting it to be heard. There's an advanced filing requirement unless that's waived by the parties or the court finds it's just in the interest of justice to hear it. So we've tried to address that. And I think, as I say, when the process has been followed, it's worked. I think if the rule is implemented and is followed, it will work. As to the motion dockets, I'm sure there have been individual cases where parties haven't gotten a motion heard as quickly as they think. Every indication I've gotten is that it works well. There's a simple, you can either request at the resolution plan date to have a motion go on the motion docket without even filing anything, and the judge can do it on the spot. Or you can file a case flow request form that we developed at any time that just lists the motion and says you'd like it put on a motion docket. We urged all the judges to be liberal in putting motions on the docket. And if there are areas where that's been a problem, I would like to know because I'd like to look into it. I don't think that's a problem with the process. It would be a problem in a particular court. But as far, I haven't experienced that attorneys are reluctant to criticize this process.
So Attorney McNamara, I see you on, I'm going to ask members of the committee to ask questions of Judge Alvis. I will get to you, I just, I didn't want you to think I wasn't going to, so I'm sorry.
I've had a lot of discussion with attorneys all over the state. I've had a lot of discussion with attorneys all over the state, including with the, the group that we work with, that includes Attorney McNamara. We've tried our best to address their concerns. We think we have as best we can. I know there are some things that they don't like about it. It's different. It's hard to change. The biggest complaint, frankly, lately, I'd say the past six months that I've heard from attorneys consistently is we have too many trials. The trials are coming up sooner than they'd like them or than they're ready for them. Not that the case isn't ready for the trial, but that they're overloaded with trial work. And I sympathize with that. But at the same time, that kind of tells me it's working, that we're doing what we set out to do, which is not to involve families in months and months and months of pendentate litigation. And then when they run out of gas, give them a trial to resolve the case, that we're assessing the case early. We're doing discovery earlier. We're getting services in place earlier. And hopefully they settle. Most cases do. But if they don't, they're getting a trial earlier. And I, I understand that attorneys have perhaps more trial commitments than they did. And that's the complaint I've gotten lately. But to me, that, that's an indication that the process is working.
Good. Stewart, did you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to make, so just back to my original question. Is there any controversy about the other rules besides 2534 and 2550? Because it's just, when you first look at this particular incident, frankly, quite probably overwhelming. Just trying to like assist this group and then moving forward with it. Because I think those are the two rules that people are upset about. And I'm a little too cattler here, but I mean, if there's something else that we should really be zeroing in on in these other rules, I'm not picking it up.
Someone's supposed to question as well. I know we talked a lot about the pendentate litany cases so we can resolve those divorces and custody applications for the final judgment. Is there a distinction that the bar is making with regards to this process between pendentate litany and post judgment motions as well? I guess that's something to consider.
Yeah, that's a good question.
So the post judgment motions have been the subject of discussion. The pathways process has been used for post judgment motions as well. The difference is you don't, there's two differences. One is we still have a resolution plan date as the first step to assess the case. And sometimes what's learned at that resolution plan date is the parties have an issue. Maybe it's just a financial issue. Someone's allegedly not paying child support. They just need a hearing. So we estimate how long the hearing will take. We see what discovery might need to be done and we schedule it. If it's a custody issue, then we, again, try to get services in place. If there's an evaluation needed to get that going and then schedule a hearing after that. But we don't typically schedule case dates after post judgment, resolution plan date, because that's in essence for pendentate matters. And with the post judgment motion, either usually there's an agreement or you need a hearing. There are, there might be other issues that come up in the meantime, and we may have status conferences in the meantime. But it's sort of a shorter version of pathways. The other difference is often in a case, once one party files a post judgment motion, that starts a flood of post judgment motions. The other party responds with maybe a related motion. And we try not to have repetitive resolution plan dates on the same case. So that if that happens, let's say a hearing has been set on the first motion and now a second related motion is filed. Ideally, we would just schedule that for the same hearing that was already set. So we, we try to minimize the number of resolution plan dates for when there's a series of related motions in a post judgment case. And the time to a hearing, I'm sure is an issue in some cases. It's always been a challenge. The family court provide hearings as quickly as people might want them. Sometimes it's because there is work that needs to be done before there could be a hearing, like an evaluation of some kind done. Other times, it's just a matter of court resources. But the mechanism is there to get these things, figure out whether they need a hearing. If so, how long will it be and when will they be ready? And then to schedule it as soon as the court's calendar permits.
Other questions for Judge Alvis?
Judge, let's just do it clear, though. I'm correct, though, at the case date, the first case date of any case, the attorneys can certainly bring to the judge's attention. We think this pendentate litany motion in particular needs priority attention from the court. We're asking for it to be on the motion calendar and we think it's going to take X amount of time, right? So the court, the judge certainly overseeing the case date knows if there's a priority motion, how much time it needs. And then certainly, again, I think everyone discussed resources with respect to space being on the motion calendar. We try to fit it in as best we can.
Right. And it's fair. So I would back it up, not even the first case date. It's the resolution plan date, which is sooner, 30 to 45 days. Clearly, an attorney or a party there could say, this motion is pending. Fine, we have a case date in 45 days or 60 days, but this motion needs to be heard now. The judge can immediately put it on a motion docket. And we, you know, if every case on the motion docket needed a half day hearing, obviously it wouldn't happen that day either. And that way, it's similar to short calendar. But we try to keep it to a number where if you needed, if every case needed 30 to 60 minutes, then it's doable.
I chuckle. I'm sorry, chuckle. I come from Stanford family, right? I think we're, it's a bit of a notorious courthouse as far as, you know, it would, it was not uncommon that a pendentate litany hearing would take three days. And I, and I certainly appreciate that the goal of pathways is sort of to trumpet that because certainly it takes up additional court resources to have that three day hearing and you're not going to get the final trial, which is certainly the goal. And I know certainly a lot of times people say, well, if you can just have this trial completed, the case is going to settle. That was always sort of, I think, the background story that we would hear. And nine times out of ten, that didn't happen, right? And three day pendentate litany hearing and then, you know, a 10 day trial was not uncommon in the Stanford Family Court. Pre and post pandemic. I was just curious because I know a lot of this comes to discretion with the judge, whoever's in, whichever judge is you were before on the case date. I focus on the case date because I left family before the motion calendar really kicked off. And I always found the, the resolution plan dates almost were too soon because they come so quickly after the case has been filed and cases may look like a track A case. And 30 days later, they're really track C case, which is the high conflict cases for folks that don't understand how that track system works. And then sort of you have a judge triaging on the second case date, trying to figure out how to pull the case back. So that's why I was just asking about the, the first case date as far as really, that's the, that's the time when attorneys can relate sparse to the court. This is either gone, Judge, this case is going sideways, or Judge, this case just, if we can get at least child support orders, we hope people come to an agreement on. But if, if you need a hearing, Judge, that's the most important thing. Alimony, child support is typically sort of the two large issues, I think, in most cases.
Again, they can certainly do it then, but they don't have to wait until then to do it. They can file a request, a case flow request, get it on the motion docket even before the case date. And I'll just give one example. There are cases certainly that change from a B to a C or even an A to a C. But I, I had a case in my court not long ago that was a track C. We had a couple of case dates set and we were at the first case state. And there was a pendentate litany motion that they said was going to take two or three days to hear. And I asked, well, will we be redoing that again at the trial? And they said, yes. Well, what else do you need to do before you're ready to trial, go to trial? I said, nothing. So will we have a second case date scheduled? Let's change that. That's not going to be a case date anymore. That'll be the first day of trial. Go to case flow, get two more days of trial. That case is on the verge of settling. It's scheduled for trial in a few weeks. Probably about eight or nine months after it was filed, which is pretty quick for a high conflict case. And I got word the other day that they're about to settle. So that's, that kind of discussion with counsel, I never could have had time to do on any consistent basis at short calendar. And every time people come into courts, chance, even if you don't resolve the case finally, to move it along toward a resolution. And that's something we have now that we didn't have before. You have a chance to talk to the parties, talk to counsel, change course if you need to and adapt to the situation.
Well, that's sort of, I guess, part of my question is if we lived in a perfect world, which we don't, and you had all the resources you needed, would this still have been the model that you would follow? I mean, if you had, if you had 150 judges sitting in family, to throw out something crazy. If you had 20 more judges, all of them besides the family, would this still be the model that you think would be the best for the state and for the people in the state?
Definitely. In fact, even more so. Because the, the big question in the beginning is, this is a great plan. Are we going to have the resources to do it? This wasn't something we did to skip by. This was, this is the idea. This is the, the way that the experts say cases like this should be handled. And
Do more jurisdictions do it?
I think they are not in a position to do it. I think they don't have, some jurisdictions have tried to do it by doing the triage based on the filing. This guy picking elements out of the complaint and having a computer do it. To me, that, I don't see how that could work well. But we have the infrastructure to do it and we have the centralized court system to do it. And someone had to be the first to do it statewide. And I, I'm proud that we're the first to do it statewide. And the numbers show that certainly there are always improvements we can make and there were bumps along the way. I think the pandemic was a curse and a blessing because it sort of forced us to implement it. Because we couldn't do anything else. But it also, it was a confusing time, obviously, to implement it. And we had to do it in a, in a way that isn't the most logical way that we would have done it had circumstances been different. We didn't have a chance to discuss in advance with the bar and outreach to the public to explain it. But it's, it's a resource heavy process. And one of the big resources you need, in my opinion, to do it properly are the family services councils that we have to have that intensive meeting and also to provide the services. You know, when I talk to judges at conferences from other states, they're just amazed that we have our family services staff. It's, it's such an advantage we have over other states.
Any other questions for Judge Alvis?
One, one advantage that I recall. Thank you for driving my warm memories of family short calendar. But it generated a lot of agreements, you know, a lot of what happened on short calendar day, people agreed. And you get it on the record and that, that happened very quickly, you know, a motion was filed, they came in, they entered into an agreement. And under the pathways, you might ultimately reach that same agreement, but it wouldn't be theoretically, it won't happen for a month or a matter of weeks later than it could have. But what, what is your observation about?
So I think it depends if we're talking about an agreement to resolve a motion or an agreement to resolve a case.
The motion, motion agreements.
It still happens, especially since, it probably wasn't happening as much until we implemented the motion docket.
When was that, by the way?
Motion docket?
Yeah.
Between late spring and the end of the summer of last year. Different courts implemented at different times because of their personnel. But by the end of the summer, everyone had it. Some courts don't do it as frequently as others. They do it based on their needs. The larger courts do it weekly. Some started May or June of last year, but everyone had one in place by September.
Also, Judge Charlie, for your question, I mean, what I saw when I was sitting behind, which I've stopped sitting in September of 2021 for this motion docket, but at that initial resolution plan date, not only did many motions get agreements, but also a lot of people got divorced. You know, all they, you know, they fill out financial updated on the spot and da, da, da. And we had a judge set aside in Bridgeport, once we got our act together, you know, on a separate teams protocol that they had to log into and boom, took care of them right then and there. You know, when you canvass the people and so on, it's very efficient. So an awful lot of that same phenomenon that you're talking about, it used to happen at short calendar, does in fact occur. Run off the bat at resolution plan dates and then also at these case dates.
So if you're still getting agreements at a comparable rate, then what you're doing is, you know, short calendar used to be an elaborate case flow request because you come in, you'd have a substantive motion, it could get heard that day, you'd get a hearing date. Now that happens just with a, a well crafted case flow request.
Yes.
It doesn't even have to be frankly, that well crafted. You check a box, I have this motion. There's a few lines that say why this motion shouldn't wait until the next court event. And a lot more likely than not, it gets put on a motion docket. I mean, I've denied a couple. I denied one recently where it was going to be a lengthy hearing and their trial is close. And there was a question whether I even had the authority to grant the temporary quote relief that was requested. It was more like a, a permanent request. So there's reasons they're denied. But generally, if you need to get on the motion docket, you'll get on the docket. The difference is the court, as it should, is taking charge of its own docket before it was on autopilot. And the court, in, in my view, sort of abdicated its responsibility to do proper scheduling.
Attorney McNamara, do you want to address the committee?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning. I was here at the request of the committee to answer any lingering questions. I did have a few comments that are responsive to questions raised by the committee and/or things Judge Alvis said, if there is time for that. So
The floor is yours at the moment.
Thank you. So with respect to Judge Stewart's specific question about what can we focus on? Certainly, the bar's primary concern, Judge Stewart, as you correctly surmised, is 2534 and 2550. I, I hate to couch things as complaints. I've heard the comments be raised as complaints a number of times in the proceedings. And we don't view them as complaints. We view them as a constructive opportunity to review the rules together to make the best possible system for the state of Connecticut. But to the extent they are, they are viewed as complaints, there are no complaints regarding the other rules. With respect to some, you're, you're welcome. I, I'm, I'm happy to refine the scope of things that we need to discuss and darken your door with. So I think we can refine it to those two rather meaty provisions. Justice McDonald, to respond to a few of your comments or your introductory remarks, I suppose, I want to be clear. I have been coming to these, these style meetings, certainly not before the Rules Committee, but with Judge Alvis since the pandemic hit. And it was requested of me from the Bar Association that I essentially provide continuity of information, which is why I'm here today. I no longer hold a direct leadership position. But I can confirm that there are a multitude of areas of agreement between the judicial branch and the bar. We agree that raising issues early in the proceedings has had a positive effect on the overall system. The early intervention is, is great. We've heard very few negative comments about early discovery. I think Judge Stewart raised that as well. So in terms of early intervention, the bar is fully on board. And when I say the bar, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the Connecticut Bar Association. The Bar Association and the Academy, the American Academy of Matrimonial Lawyers worked together to provide comments to you, which were memorialized in Attorney Bonnie M. Endola's letter dated February 10th, which was part of the previous, previously produced documents. So there certainly are areas of commonality. In terms of remaining concerns, I think if you look at the Schedule B on Attorney M. Endola's statement in conjunction with her letter, which is very critical, you will see the outstanding issues. Of, of my concern on behalf of the Bar Association, I see the following. We deeply share the concern raised today that short calendar generated the opportunity for the creation of agreements. And that is something that is raised in Attorney M. Endola's letter, which I think certainly my constituents, and there's, I think, 700 members of the Connecticut Bar Association Family Law Section, have raised to our collective governing body, the Executive Committee. So that remains a significant concern. I, I was listening to the comments today and was concerned at some of the language choices. I, I was listening to the comments today and was concerned at some of the language choices. There seems to be, or I, I would not want there to be a misunderstanding of fact. As far as the Bar Association is aware, only track C cases, which I think represents like 15%. And again, I'm no statistician, I'm getting metrics kind of ad hoc. It is my, is our understanding that only case track C cases receive two case dates as a matter of general practice. Most other cases, as we understand it anecdotally from, from members of the bar across the state, receive one case date. So when that case date happens and passes, it's gone and you are on the motion docket. There is anecdotal commentary about challenges to get on the, on the motion docket. It is fair to say that some jurisdictions have it more frequently than others. And that creates problems of uniformity. There's also in, in the proceeding, in the rules in front of this committee, the language that says the next case date, as well as a party's right to confer with the court regarding scheduling orders. Those, from the bar's perspective, are not intentionally misleading, but potentially confusing to litigants. Because as I said, the next case date, there's only one in most cases and then you're on the motion docket. And addressing the issue of uniformity, that is similarly a problem for the bar because not all jurisdictions are requiring parties or counsel, as the case may be, to appear in front of a judge on a resolution plan date. So what's happening is the scheduling orders are being delivered without input, which I don't think is the intended, the, the intention behind pathways, but it is in fact happening. As it pertains to the resolution plan dates specifically, I'd like to just address that for a moment. It is true, as I said earlier, that the early intervention has been helpful in many cases. But at the 45 day mark, in terms of resolving motions, I would just like to, to highlight for the committee, at 45 days, assuming you filed a request for production on the first day that your case existed, you wouldn't even be past the objection point, right? And that's a very finite example, you know, a micro, a, a micro example for the court to consider. But 45 days, given the lifespan of a family case, and more importantly, given what we're talking about when we talk about family laws, which is the intricate bonds between two people that the state has to unfortunately untangle. That is, from the collective experience of the bar, not necessarily likely to lead to the resolution and identification of all issues. It's not uncommon for, in family law cases, for issues not to, for issues to rise much later in a case. I wanted to address as well Judge Albers's comment that lawyers are, are commenting that they've got trial dates too close together. That is a concern of the bar. And I, I kind of smiled when Judge Albers relayed that concern because I do think, you know, all of our colleagues want to be prepared. But I want to highlight for the committee as well that the feeling of the bar is not only a concern about trials being clumped too close together. I mean, that's a scheduling issue, we can absolutely get past that. But the concern is that in the absence of face-to-face time with the judge, as one of the committee members highlighted, and in the absence of an opportunity to resolve those micro issues at a motion docket or at a case date, cases are going to trial at a rate that anecdotally feels more accelerated and, and frankly, more cases seem to be going to trial. I don't have the statistics on that. We're not privy to those statistics. This is anecdotal reporting, but that is a concern on the, of the bar. If I could just look at my notes, because some of this was, was in real time. I'd like to highlight as well that to the extent that there is any concern on behalf of the committee, that the commentary reflected in Attorney Andola's letter, or I should say the combined bars F letter and the schedule, is designed to give preferential treatment to lawyers. I, I would simply highlight to the committee that I can personally represent that since the onset of the pandemic, the concern of the bar has been for the population of the, of the litigants in the state of Connecticut as a whole. And we went so far as a bar association with triaging directly with legal services on a very regular basis to make sure that the concerns of self-represented litigants were being protected in our commentary, which in fact is the concern of the bar as it pertains to the case flow request, that we're creating a system that requires more of parties than has been previously required. Short calendar was every Monday and absolutely there was litigation abuse. And it was horrific, that, that is irrefutable. But in terms of creating a system that is manageable for the everyday person who is not represented by a lawyer, which is the disproportionately high amount of people in the state of Connecticut, the concern is that the process, while appropriately identifying issues upfront, is not as user-friendly as it could be because you simply cannot get into court with the same amount of frequency that you did under our previous rules. I think last but not least is the issue of predictability in the judicial system. And I would say that this is the overarching primary concern. I know Rafi is here too and is intending to speak on this and I don't want to steal his thunder. But from the position of the bar, it is irrefutable that neither a lawyer nor a self-represented party can know with certainty in the way that short calendar presented, when their motions are going to be heard or if they are going to be heard before trial. Previously, we were able to say to litigants, I am going to file a motion today. In four weeks, your motion will have appeared on a calendar and I can go to court and speak on your behalf. Or you can go to court and speak on your behalf. That does not exist under the current pathways plan. It requires judicial intervention. It requires a clerk to bring a case flow request or a motion docket request to a court and a court to make an independent finding about whether or not that should go on the motion docket or not. And that is fundamentally different than what the state of Connecticut has previously done. That is of significant concern to the combined bars. I, I think that's all I have at the moment, Your Honors. I am more than happy to ask, to answer any questions that the committee may have raised.
Well, I, I mean, I may use the term complaints. You're, you're more politic in calling them concerns. Concerns are important, but not as important as solutions. Do, do you have any proposal for how we can bridge the disparate perspectives on this issue from the branch and from the bar?
Yes, Your Honor, we've been providing proposals since June of 2020. I would say that the most recent proposal is contained within Schedule A and Schedule B. I think we do continue to value the collaboration between the bar and, and the judicial branch. But the proposals are specifically
In the Andola letter, you mean?
Yes, Your Honor. And, and we are anticipating this question. We are prepared. The Connecticut Bar Association is prepared. And I don't, I don't want to speak for the academy, but I believe they would, they are prepared to work with us to provide updated commentary if that's something the Rules Committee would like. And if, if I may, there was, there was one more thing that I think is important to note. For reasons that are unclear to me, actually, I'm going to take that back. For reasons that are clear to me, but are disappointing to me, there has been a pervasive concern that these problems are specific to one jurisdiction. And it happens to be the jurisdiction I, I practice primarily in, which is Stanford. And it has been asked of me robustly, probably by same, some of the same people who may have voiced concern about appearing before this committee, which concern, I might add, I do not have. Judge Albers and Judge Bezuto have been nothing but welcoming of our participation. But to the extent that this is being couched as a jurisdictional problem, please allow me to resoundingly say, that is not true. And there is a legion of lawyers who are excellent and well-established in their profession statewide that would be happy to come and tell this committee the same thing. I'm here so as not to darken your doorstep with 400 people. But the perception that this is an issue relegated to one J D is something that the Bar Association has resoundingly asked me to refute.
Any questions for Attorney McComer? Rafi, did you want to address the committee?
Well, Attorney Diaz is here and she's a practitioner.
Okay.
I would also eventually like to be able to say something, but I don't think I'm the right person. Attorney Karkova is also on
Well, we, okay, I don't want this to go on and on, but, but you've been very patient.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good morning. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to be heard on some of these issues. I do share a lot of the same concerns that Attorney McComer has already responded to. And I'll just add a couple of things on behalf of legal services. I've been a legal service attorney for over 16 years and I'm familiar with the family practice of pre and post pandemic, the way it works with short calendar and the way it currently works under pathways. So I'm happy to provide some input about how I get being influenced and serving both indigent clients and clients of the domestic violence community that we represent in our office. I practice predominantly out of the Hartford J D, so not Stanford. And I'm happy to speak to some of that. But what we're seeing in terms of like the resolution plan date is that the results are very unpredictable. As Attorney McComer stated, there isn't a way to really predict what's going to happen in terms of after meeting with family relations, are you going to have your motions heard or not? I've had cases where they have been heard. I had a colleague who had a two-hour hearing on a resolution plan date, which is wonderful. She had four witnesses testify and she had a resolution of her case within a month. And then we've also had cases on the other end of the spectrum, go to resolution plan date and then nothing happened, you know, in terms of a case date or motion docket or anything like that for over seven months. And so it really is kind of all over the place. And it's also not really clear with family relations in terms of their screening of these cases. We've seen cases where, for example, if I can compare two custody applications, both which went to resolution plan date, there was no agreement as to parenting plan and child support or custody. And in one of those cases, they were, you know, screened out as track C. And then the other, they were screened out as track A, neither of which have had case dates, I might add. But as you can tell, the resolution plan dates have been somewhat predictable for both attorneys and self-represented parties alike. The case dates are also unpredictable in terms of the process. What happens on a case date varies. We cannot really advise clients with certainty what's going to happen on a case date. We've had situations where we appear on a case date and we go directly in front of a judge and are told start your hearing. We've appeared on case dates where we meet with family and we have an opportunity to negotiate and try to resolve the case without going in front of the judge. And other times where we have not been given an opportunity with family. And lastly, we've had opportunities to go in front of a judge, but kind of as a triage to determine what motions are pending, how much time are you going to need? And then to be referred to case flow to get a specially assigned hearing date. So I've seen the case dates used in all those three different ways, just in the short time that I've been using case dates. The motion docket is also unpredictable in terms of the use of the motion docket. I know they've only been around for under a year, but in the one year that they've been around, I've only had one matter referred to motion docket and that was for an unopposed divorce. Where OP just was not appearing for the court. The court said, I'm going to put it down on a short calendar, excuse me, on a motion docket so that you can go forward and oppose if you need to do that. But never for like a child support or custody type situation. So while all three of these, you know, present on its face to appear as opportunities for parties and attorneys to access the court, we're finding that the access is more on paper than it is in practice. And, you know, in cases that I've seen where no child support or custody order has entered for six, seven months, I see that as a, a big concern, especially for self-props, especially for people who don't have attorneys and don't know what to do to get that case heard. And where people are not able to see their children, are not able to get child support. And we're talking about, you know, clients who are extremely poor and child support can be a very huge factor in their ability to pay rent or feed their children. So I have two cases, for example, that, you know, have been pending for over six or seven months where no orders have entered, no case dates have been scheduled, where parties are resorting to self-help. Unfortunately, you know, while I agree with Judge Albers that short calendar wasn't, you know, super pretty and certainly was litigation abuse. On the other hand, it provided, even if it was a band-aid, it provided some form to stop the bleeding. And right now, we don't have that without, without a system to access the court more quickly. What I see happening is people resorting to self-help, picking up children, not bringing them back to the other parent, violating for orders. And, you know, if a contempt is filed and there's nothing scheduled for several months. You know, I had one case where it took me seven months to get the children back to my client after father violated or failed to return them. And I don't really see that as, you know, a good way to handle these types of situations because then people are just going to be encouraged to do things on their own terms. And again, another case where child support has not been issued in over seven months because father's just not agreeing to pay and we have not had an opportunity for hearing. So those are kind of the issues that we're seeing. As far as, there was one question and concern about family relations being the gatekeeper. I think the reason that comes up or couched in that way is because family relations is the, really the first, the first meeting. If the resolution plan date is a family relation. And again, as Attorney McComer stated, if they're scheduling the case or screening the case for a track A, no case date has been scheduled. But even, and, and as we know, those track A cases are often not track A cases at all and quickly develop into very contentious cases. But in cases where even, I've seen track C cases where it was determined that a G I L was necessary and it was, you know, there have been four case studies conferences on that case. There is also no case date on that case as well. And even though that's a case C, a track C case, the same have occurred. So I think that's the reason maybe why some people are viewing it as, or have commented that family relations is kind of a gatekeeper. And that's because they kind of determine, not so much, that's not to say that the court does not have the discretion to put things down for hearing, but without hearing from the litigants or the parties or the attorneys, it's hard for them to know when to do that and how to do it. And also agree with Attorney McComer that when, after we meet with family relations at a resolution plan date, these scheduling orders are coming in after the fact and they're not coming in with the input of the attorney. We see the resolutions, you know, the memorandum of the, of the screening after the fact. That's when we find out if it was placed on a track A or C. And that's when we find out if we're going to get more dates moving forward. But it is not with our input as to what we think should be happening on that. And so that's also a concern that I, I wanted to raise. I'm happy to answer some questions. I don't want to continue talking and I know my colleague Attorney Karkova is here and I know Attorney Fidel.
Very briefly though, Attorney Karkova? As brief as you can be.
I'll be very brief. I second everything that was said about the R P Ds, not, no predictability on what's going to happen on those days. One of the things I wanted to talk about very briefly is, at Connecticut Legal Services, I manage the statewide unit of family attorneys. So our attorneys practice in all the courts across the state except for Hartford, New Haven and Melford. And what I see is just a very glaring lack of uniformity from court to court, judicial district to judicial district, how things are being scheduled, how cases are handled. What happens on an R P D in one courthouse is not what What happens on an R P D in one courthouse is not what happens in another. How do you get on the motion docket? All those things, there's just, I personally, when I am working with an attorney in one J D and then I move over to work with someone else in a different J D, I feel as if I'm starting from scratch all over again. I'm pulling out all the instructions and the rules because the judicial districts, the courthouses are all functioning their own way and there's just no lack of predictability on how things are being handled. And to a certain extent, I feel like there's a lack of accountability as to how things are handled in the courts. So when we talk about, you know, I heard Judge Alvis say that he hears things are going well and think cases are being moved. That I believe that's true. That's what he's hearing, but from pro se parties and attorneys who are newer to the family court system, they are struggling to get matters heard and they don't have someone to go to to say, how do I get my case done? How come my case isn't moving? How come I can't get a court date? So I think that the lack of uniformity from J D to J D is an additional barrier to justice for lawyers and especially pro se parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Briefly, Gravy?
Very, I'll be very brief. What I've heard from the legal services attorneys states, so first of all, the message is coming to me statewide, not just from one district, but the message that I'm getting most is that from our perspective, the inability to get reasonably quick certain penitentiary orders is really hurting people. And that there's no guarantee, even if you wait to the, to the resolution date, that you're necessarily going to get an order at that time. And so that you're ending up with these gap periods where people who really have no resources cannot get an order for child support, they can't get, they can't get anything preliminary. And Attorney Diaz talked about those and I think it would just reinforce the fact that what I'm hearing, I'm not a practitioner. What I'm hearing though is that is a significant consequence. And it's a consequence, not just for people represented by attorneys, but people who are pro se. And that, I'm not saying it can't be fixed, but that that's an important concern and that I hope in you looking at the rules, what rules you would change, you would make that significant part of how you decide what the rules should look like and how that procedure should be. It's 60 days can be impossible. You have no money to pay the rent, you're going to get out on the street with your kids. And so that can't be allowed to happen. The system cannot force that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me move forward.
Right.
Do you see any, any way to try to bridge the chasm here?
Well, one, one thing is I've heard some things today that concern me not so much because I think there's an issue with the process, but maybe in certain courts, things aren't happening as they should. And that's something that I should address and I, in particular, having heard Attorney Diaz would be happy to speak with her more, you know, the more specifics we can get about what's happening, the motion docket is there. It's relatively easy to file.
Is it truly up to every judge to determine how often those motion dockets?
It's up to each court.
Well, can that be addressed, that it has to be regular?
Well, it's regular in every case. It's just some courts, there hasn't been the demand for it. So they.
Then there's nothing to be heard on that day. I mean, it, it seems like it's part of the unpredictability is that it's not a regularly scheduled event, even if there's nothing to happen on the event because there's no motions to be heard on that calendar day.
Well, I'm not sure if it's that a docket isn't being held or for some reason motions that should go on the docket, even though it's being held weekly, aren't getting on there. And I'm not sure why that would be. And that's what I would, if Attorney Diaz is willing to meet with the, and maybe even speak with the, this is Hartford primarily, that's presiding judge there.
Can we make sure that this doesn't get turned off?
What should I do?
Just see how it says idle TV stand by.
Thank you. Would you press that button? You don't want it, you didn't do it. You know what, actually, why don't we take a quick bathroom break and maybe we can get the IT books back? Some short break anyway.
We can still see you for avoidance of doubt and hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we can still hear and see you. We just, you're welcome.
That looks like I'm here and people are still active. It's not showing on the larger screen.
All right, okay.
I mean, I'm just struggling with the, when it was short calendar, what was the reality of getting a penitentiary hearing within 60 days? I just don't, you know, candidly, COVID sort of I'd say eroded my brain as far as when we were able to get those done because the dockets were so heavy pre-COVID that I don't recall having a 60 day turnaround for a penitentiary day. Now that's different than certainly having short calendar with people meeting in the hallway and coming to an agreement. I understand some of that happens in an R P G, but as Attorney McComara pointed out, sometimes the R P G is so early on that there's nothing really to talk about yet or the issues haven't really been flushed out yet, which I also understand. But I think that's, I'm just sort of struggling with, you know, there, you know, because again, there's resources versus the process. And I just can't really determine based on what I've heard today, which is it? Because certainly if we had more judges that could have multiple motion dockets, certainly you could get everybody in 60 days. I just don't. I'm just sort of struggling with that, the reality of that it's the process that's created this sort of delay.
But when we had the short calendar, I mean, it was unpredictable as well because like what Judge Alvis was saying, you could be the only judge doing a hundred cases on short calendar and not have, you know, we, sometimes we had overflow judges if a trial settled, you know, you're trying to balance, we got to do short calendar, but at the same time, give everyone, you know, the time that they need per trial as well. So if, you know, we had matters that I'm like, if, if it wasn't a short 15 minute, you know, argument or 30 minute argument, you're going to get a hearing date. So I mean, that same unpredictability was there when we had short calendar. And Attorney Diaz's point, I mean, I was, I know at the beginning when this was rolled out, it was difficult because the R P Ds were being done virtually. But once we went back into court, at least in Hartford, everyone after an R P D was going before a judge. And we issued the sentencing orders on the record. And certainly if anyone had any dispute that, no, this is not an A, Your Honor, it really needs a little more than an A, it's track B. And we certainly would hear that and change it if that's what was needed or, you know, hearing from the parties more in court, maybe something more needed to be done from family relations than just a pre-trial to get the paperwork done. So that's why I was surprised, at least in Hartford. I know when we were virtual, it was difficult. People didn't have the financial affidavits. It was difficult to do child support guidelines, but I think the process, you know, those wrinkles are ironed out once we went in person.
So I'd like to respond to that in that perhaps attorneys know, you know, to speak up and advocate for, you know, more specific scheduling order or a different track. And now that we have this information moving forward, we might be able to do that. Self represented parties certainly do not. They do not know what a track A case is versus a track C or that that being put on a track C is going to mean that there's going to be two built in case dates or more. They have no way of knowing that. And so a lot of the cases we get involved in at legal services are initiated by self reps. And then they come to us when things are not working out, when they're not getting into court and then we get involved after the fact. And so we see in cases like these that I mentioned where maybe they were initially started as self reps, maybe already had their R P D and are coming to us, that this is happening. And I agree with you about the short calendar. While there was a lack of certainty of what you would get that day, there was certainty that you would be at least all in court, that you would see each other, that there was an opportunity to be seen by a judge, even if it was for five minutes. Because sometimes when you're dealing with an opposing party that is self rep and a judge telling that person, listen, this is what you need to do and this is when you need to do a buy, even if it was for five minutes, it was completely helpful to the case. It made a huge impact on the case versus now if we're not in court for a couple of months and then we get a case date and that self rep is completely unprepared. They haven't provided you with a financial affidavit. They haven't turned over discovery. Then you're going to a case date and you're not making the best use of that hearing. I haven't even been able to run child support guidelines because I have no idea what this person is earning, if they're working, what they're going to say they're earning, what my client thinks they're earning, et cetera. So it's very difficult to make that happen as opposed to, you know, having an opportunity to be heard by a judge, even if it's briefly. And we knew under our calendar, if it was something over an hour, you weren't going to be heard. At least we could say that to our clients. Listen, we need to keep this to, you know, focus, let's, you know, razor sharp focus on what we can have judge hear in under an hour. Otherwise this is going to get kicked down the road earlier, but at least we could have that opportunity. And if we were standing in the hallways, as much as I loved doing that for five hours, at least it meant that you were talking to the opposing party and that you were having an opportunity to negotiate and potentially settle and reach an agreement, even before you got to see family relations, even before you got to see a judge. That doesn't happen now under the system. There's no opportunity for us to really negotiate or meet with the opposing parties that are self represented at all. And we are in resolution plan date with family and then we don't see them for a window of time, two, three months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, steps. I don't have any idea. Do you have any suggestions for us? Something we can move back to?
Yeah, I think a lot of what I'm hearing today and what concerns me the most is if in fact there are set time sensitive, and I won't call it reverberancy because we have procedures for reverberancy, but time sensitive penitentiary motions that for whatever reason aren't getting on the motion docket and that keeps.
It's not going on for seven months.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I'd like to have a chance to try to figure out what the reason is because someone didn't ask to get on it because they didn't understand or they asked and the request never got to a judge or the request was denied. Or that court isn't holding enough motion dockets. And I can't answer that question as I sit here. I, I've been generally told they're working well.
We're not getting anything done today, but this is actually helpful today. Is that what we, something for us to do at the moment?
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta study this more and I, it sounds like you have some opportunities to, to go back and check with judges in the various J Ds whether or not some of these issues to be done. And maybe you have some proposed revisions to the package here based on whatever those conversations are. I'm sorry, I can't be more productive on this today, but okay. I just have one more thing on everything you are trying to do though. I mean, I, I think that all of us would say that this is a huge task and you didn't probably voluntarily sign up for it, but we all know that you're trying to do the best thing for the state.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is 2023 L S S.
This, Your Honor, is under the practice book. You need to make a recommendation for members of this committee. Three current numbers are up. Their terms are up. Attorney Lowe, Attorney Hannah Bree and Kennedy. Attorney Lowe is as vice chair. You recommended that to the chief justice. So these are, these will re-up their appointments for another three year term. Legal Services has contacted them and they are willing to serve again. The one caveat here is that Attorney Kennedy, you've had some geographic diversity on this committee in terms of you have somebody from Hartford, somebody from the lower end of the state, somebody from the Norwich area. Attorney Kennedy was appointed when he was with risk casting at Hartford. He is now with a different charging behavior in Milwaukee. And that seems to be the only issue I point out to you. He is willing to serve if you make recommendations to the chief justice to.
You have any objection?
No objection.
All right. So is there a motion to those three votes to be appointed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, say no. That passes unanimously. Next is the proposed schedule for next four year. Are there any comments on it? Did I try to get the vote on?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
No second.
There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, say no. That passes unanimously.
It means be in, are we in person or hybrid?
I think we're, I think we're doing mostly teams.
You had decided that last time that public hearing be in person.
I think the public hearing, yeah. Probably hopefully next year we can be back in the courtroom for the public hearing. But it, it sounds like teams work for everybody. Okay, so the next item is the vote for the practice book revisions that are being considered by the Rules Committee. I just for completeness, hopefully we're still on our YouTube channel. I'll do this as quickly as possible, but for the record, I wanted to, in the public face, I wanted to note that we had received several written communications relating to the proposed changes to practice book section 38 dash eight. Is, has, has this been posted on our website?
Yes.
Okay. So, so if you're interested in the comments that have been submitted to the committee regarding those changes, they've all been posted to our website and are available for public inspection. I should also mention just stop point last here, that as is required by practice book, we, we sent to the co-chairman and the ranking members of the judiciary committee all of the proposed changes that we were going to be voting on today. And to my knowledge, we received no feedback from any of those, the co-chairs or the ranking members. Is that correct?
I believe so, Your Honor. Unless you have any in this.
No, there, there's, there's no, so we did not receive any, any comment from the legislative leaders about the proposals. Then I did want to mention because I think there's some misapprehension that the proposed changes to the cash bail option was not an initiative of this committee. It was rather an initiative of the Connecticut Sentencing Commission. And the membership of that commission is available on their website. It has about 15 or 20 different members and it's chaired by Judge Pavia, who's the appointee of the chief justice. But there are appointees from all the legislative leaders on the commission as well as appointees of the governor. And then there are several individuals who are on the commission, including the chief state's attorney, other state's attorneys, other judges, commissioner of emergency services and public protection, police chiefs and the commissioner of corrections. And as Judge Pavia noted previously, I think all of one of the members of the commission voted in favor of the proposal that had been submitted to us. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record. With that having been said, is there a motion to approve the practice book provisions that are before us for going to the judge's annual meeting? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think I have a question as with respect to the bail. Everyone's talking about all these statistics, but were there, are there actual numbers out there somewhere that we can look at? Because some of the things, not that I'm, you know, necessarily persuaded by one or the other side or the other, but some of the things raised by some of the bail bonds people who came to speak were concerning. And I just I've been wondering about that data and whether they're talking about the same data that the sentencing committee is, because they're talking about different time periods and different percentages, and it is somewhat concerning.
I have serious questions about the sourcing of some of the data. And the increase of the pre-trial population is due to COVID. It's not due to a 10% cash bail option. In fact, those are the lowest bail amounts. The number of individuals who, I looked at it the other day, who are in pre-trial detention are at the upper range. pre-trial detention, um, are at the upper ranges of uh, of the um, bail amounts that uh, that can't be met. And I think it's important for people to remember, this is an option. Um, also, sureties are an option. There's nothing that requires that, somebody who doesn't have these resources might be able to uh, uh, strike a different deal with a, with a bail bondsman. Um, this is not a mandated program, this is an option that's available. And um, all of the law enforcement folks who are on the sentencing commission, uh, all of the prosecutors, they're all in favor of this. Um, and they studied it for, at length for a couple of years. So frankly, I am more comfortable relying on their uh, statistics and data than what I consider to be uh, somewhat loose um, uh, recitation of data that was presented in some of the testimony. Which part?
Well, so uh, the statistics that were presented today, um, we're not in a position to vet those. Uh, they, they could be uh, considered. And I do think that there's a big policy element here that it would be appropriate for the legislature to spend much, uh, much more resources to investigate these issues. Be inappropriate subject for them to look at. For our purposes, the extent that there was a policy element here, that decision was made uh, with the last change. And uh, that is to allow cash bails uh, under the uh, circumstances where it's now available. And the, our action here doesn't preclude the legislature from uh, weighing in and taking this up as well. Uh, so I, I, I don't, I, I was concerned about some of the things I heard as well. Do think that they're worthy of uh, fuller examination, but I think that's uh, but I don't think we need to do that. We already have the cash bail system in place and I'm comfortable accepting the recommendation that they get down to seven percent.
And the only thing I would add is um, you know, we do have a very good tradition in the state of three branches trying to work uh, in tandem on issues. That's why I pointed out uh, that these were, all of these proposals were submitted to the leadership of the judiciary committee and we received uh, no comments, uh, positive or negative uh, back. Um, there's a very good argument to be made that bail is purely a judicial branch function, uh, and not a legislative branch, but um, but that's, we've never had those kind of hard lines. It, it is a communication and um, and so, you know, I did know that one piece of correspondence indicated that there was some legislation uh, pending. I, I don't know about it. Um, it wasn't cited what uh, what bill that is. I don't know if it's been voted on by any committee. I'm not aware of any of it. So um, if, if the legislature um, steps up and gives us different input at some point, obviously we would take that into consideration, I would think. Is that fair, fair to say? All right, any other comments? Okay, with that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. And uh, then um, I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda. Uh, if there's nothing else, um, set the motion to return.
So moved.
Is there a second? They moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.